You are watching Access La Porte County, Channel 97. Coming up next is July 26, 2022 meeting of the La Porte County Plan Commission Special Meeting. You can find more information on this meeting by visiting www.xslaportecounty.org.
We're going to open up the workshop for the Plan Commission for a rezon request on State Road 2, and I'm going to open this, and we're going to have to speak loud because the microphones in the room aren't on because we're doing Alco TV, so you might, if you can't hear, tell us. So we're going to open this up, and this is just a workshop to see what concerns there are. We cannot take any votes or take any action until 6 o'clock. So I'm going to first leave it open to our attorney to discuss everyone what this entails. This 5 o'clock workshop.
Alright, so the intention of this is for
Microphone.
Monstrators to interact.
Mr. Bee Gees, microphone on.
For the home viewers.
I thought they were on a
Home viewers.
Home viewers.
Okay, my apologies. So one of the members requested this meeting so the monstrators and the petitioners can interact, and so there's not misunderstandings as to what's being requested, okay? The official request, the presentation doesn't start till 6:00, they can't take a vote till 6:00 because that's the date and time of the official notices. Okay, anybody have any questions about that? So Todd, do you want to kick it off and give us some basics and? Not to put you on the spot, right?
Well, exactly, thank you. Our request is to rezone 166 acres, as you indicated, on the highway, Highway 2, on the south side. I think we're all familiar with the project. We were here in February, the commissioners in March where they denied the rezoning to the R1B zoning classification, so now we're coming back with the R1A district. The R1A district lot sizes are 50% larger, and so our density is going to be significantly less. We have a conceptual plan that I think has been shared with staff, I don't know if it's been shared with you, that has 237 homes on 166 acres, that's the one. Not dense, in my opinion, at all, and that's, that's our request. The concerns that we heard last time, the concerns that you heard last time, were the farming activity of the adjacent properties. And we think that the last plan had buffering and separation between the back of the lots and the adjacent developments. On the west is an existing subdivision, on the south and on the east are active farms, and you heard from those, those farmers with regard to their activities. We have, I think, increased the buffer separations. This is a conceptual plan. We need the ability to have the blessing of the county with a zoning change where we have, now we think, a reduced number of lots, a significant reduction, so that we can engineer it and then move forward. And as, as we heard last time, we know, and I think it's important for everyone to recognize, certainly you do, that we've got a big step to go even if the county does rezone the property, and that's called primary plat. We have to go through the platting process, we have to follow the code, we have to have all of the concerns of the public health, safety, and welfare when we plat it out, when we engineer it, we have to design the stormwater, all of the things that your ordinance provides, all of the protections for the neighboring properties. I don't believe that this 166 acres is farm ground, it's densely wooded. That's our request, and I'm not sure what the next step is in our process. I know how a public hearing works, but I don't know how you're, you want to handle the workshop.
Well, my thought is, if our monstrators said, again, if the people that are against it, you're going to have a chance to make your record at our regular meeting, but if you have questions or want to have a discussion, now's the time, okay? And this is the guy to ask the questions of.
I'm going to sit right here and I'll take notes.
Perfect.
So welcome anyone to the podium to have these discussions, because this is a workshop that's going to be on public access as a workshop for the Port County Plan Commission. Any questions or discussion? I think the Plan Commission can ask questions, but we can't make any decisions.
I have a question. Susan Taylor, I live on 350 East, 2191 350 East. Our utilities in that area are crap. We lose electricity or cable at least once a week. Now you're going to add 237 more homes to that? You can't even give us utilities in the area, and you want to add more?
We don't provide it.
That, and you're cutting down a designated forest of trees to put in homes. Aren't you aware of global warming? That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. This is an open discussion for the neighborhood to ask questions of the developer and ask their concerns or what they would like to change, what your request from them, if they go forward, buffer zones, whatever you want.
My name is Richard Strider, I live at 2367 North 350 East. I have a few concerns, one being how dense this is going to be, I don't care what they say, we don't live in Valpo, we don't live in Chicago, this is dense, we are in the county, this is farm district. I made the effort to better myself to move out here for my family, for my kids, to have room, to have places to breathe, we like shooting guns, you're about to put 300 more people out there, or 300 houses, that's anywhere between 7 to 1,000 more people, that's a city. I don't care how small they say that is, it's a problem. We have no say of, okay, we're going to have wells or septics, or what are you going to do with all of that? We already have plenty of people, you have ground rotter, what off, we have farms out there, this is farmland. I would like some information of why this is getting brought forward when we also have, I drove around the county today, we have multiple subdivisions with tons of open land, why can't we develop those first? The one subdivision in the area has tons of open lots, not being developed, so why are we, let's just tear down a whole forest, a classified forest to build more houses? I, I can't, for the life of me, try and figure that out. If anybody else, I can't, I can't see it.
Thank you. Again, this is open forum.
We could ask questions too.
Yes, you can ask questions.
I have a question for the attorney. So it shows here there's what, six phases of this project? Is that correct?
I think there's eight phases actually.
Eight?
Yep.
Okay, so what's, what's the timeline? Do you guys have a schedule on like completing all eight phases by a certain time, or is this just going to be one phase at a time and see how it goes?
Well, it, it's not quite that simple. We start with Phase 1, and the market dictates how fast we go. So, you know, I, I was watching some national news this morning, and there's a lot of concern about a recession on the horizon. My guess is if there's a recession coming up in six or eight months, that's going to hit right about the time, if, if we get all the approvals, that we're going to be getting primary plat approval. So Phase 1 is going to go in, but it's not going to sell as fast as if we don't have a recession. So I guess my crystal ball is not exactly crystal clear right about now because of the uncertainty, but we would anticipate that each phase would, would go down in, in the order that they're numbered on there, and the market will dictate how fast.
And can you share what the approximate size of the homes are going to be?
So we had talked about that when the lots were smaller, the lots are going to be bigger, so the size of the home and the size of the lot is directly proportionate. We were talking about, John, correct me, 350 to 450 property value or house value?
Yeah, roughly, but the size of the home is, it's a, it's a nice home, it's like 2,000, 2,200 square feet, yeah, like nice homes.
So these are, these are going to be quality homes. The value is, again, if you'd have asked me what a 2,000, 2,200 square foot home was 18 months ago, it was a lot less, as we all know, so.
Well, you're, for, for discussion's sake, there's no driveway entrance, well, there is a driveway entrance too, but you're going to have some substantial work to put XL-DL entrance, and the sewers on the north side of two, so you're going to have some work there to even get across, so that the timeframe to building one house is a year, two years?
I would agree.
To get across that, just to build House 1, okay. Any other one else? Open discussion. Board, audience?
Hello, my name's Matt Wright, live in Mulligan Meadows, so we're, they're going to be in our backyard. On my understanding was, was before the lots were going to be about .25 the first time they ran it up the hill, and now my understanding is .33, how is that 50% bigger? When we bought, one of the reasons why, we just, we just moved our house, we're in a brand new house, we just moved in in March, we just had our house built. One of the big factors was, was how quiet it was, and we were told when we bought our lot that it was zoned agricultural, nothing's going to be in our backyard. So nothing is ever set in stone, but we're told it's farmland, we won't have to worry about coming in anything behind us. What kind of barriers are going to be? Because with that hearing that nothing's coming in behind us, we built a big house with the entire back of our house is glass, looking out at the woods. So, I mean, I'm going to, are we going to be looking eyeball to eyeball people in our backyard now? You know, so are they going to be hooked up to the sewer so there won't be septic? Because I mean, that's a lot of, that's obviously a lot of septic, a lot of, you know, everybody has wells out there, you know, all the water, just, you know, it seems like a lot of people for, for that little area, you know, 200, 227 or 37 lots, I mean, Mulligan Meadows, we have 20 lots. I mean, and as was previous said, Sand Ridge across the way has a bunch of lots for sale. I mean, there is, there is, you can go in the whole, when you go in, the whole north side of it's for sale, I mean, it's probably a dozen lots. So I mean, there's areas out there to, to buy, I think there's even a lot for sale in our subdivision, one left. So I mean, I just don't know if there's, is there this massive need for it? Thank you.
It looks like Sand Ridge has about 20 lots left. They're big lots. Anyone else? This is open forum.
Hello, my name's Luke Smith, I live on 3974 East 350 North. I had a few questions if I could ask the petitioner, if that's okay?
Yeah, it's open.
A question I have for you is, do you guys aware of how long that property has been in classified forests?
I don't know how long it is, but it's no longer.
I understand that the question is, were you aware of how long that it's been part of the community as a classified forest?
I do not have that information.
Okay, it was 1956 to 19, in 1958, okay, so it's been a big, huge part of the community for a long time. I understand it's important to try to preserve what we have there as a community, so I just said, I wanted to ask that question. Second thing I ask, did you talk with the District 19 forester to determine if that forest that's been there and protected for almost 70 years, if there's any endangered animals? Is there any wildlife in there that needs protecting? Did you allow them to walk the field or walk the property?
So all of those protections, endangered species, all of the environmental ordinances and state statutes and, and so forth will be followed when we go through the platting process. And if we require permits, if there are any habitat studies that are required, the Indiana BAT study, I've been involved in projects that have done all of those, and we will follow all of those rules to determine that. But the rezoning is not where you do that, that's done through the platting process.
Well, I understand that, but it is a big consideration to rezone it because it is agricultural, it is part of the
But we don't get to develop it even if the zoning is changed if we don't comply with those laws.
Well, I understand that, but this is a big part of our community and it's important to us.
And it will be protected if we don't comply with the law.
Well, that's retroactive, you want to say, I want to proceed forward before I do my homework. That's what I'm hearing.
No, I'm going to do my homework when it's appropriate to do my homework, when I have the engineering in order to satisfy the permit requirements that the state requires. I can't just walk into the state and say, I want to develop this subdivision without having plans, and I can't develop the plans if I don't have the zoning.
I understand that, but here as a community, and our representatives are here to represent us, they're here to protect the investment of our community, and rule number, and number one in that property is the wildlife, number one. Before it could even be considered to get rezoned, it needs to be considered, is it okay to go ahead and tear down that forest?
I, I would disagree with you, I don't think this
Because you guys are here for money.
No.
We live here.
I don't, I don't think the
Mr. President, Mr. President, Mr. President.
Yes.
Exactly, that's
Excuse me? I'm asking the president, you guys are on a Zoom meeting and you're also going out to the public, so we actually should have somebody ask questions, then he should come to the microphone because she's back here in this room trying to record this for the public. The only reason the, the speakers aren't on in the whole complex is because there's another meeting on the other side of the wall, but to get it out to the public, it's watching, if you'd ask your question there and then you come to the microphone and answer is way better for this young lady back here, she's
That's all I have for my questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Jennifer Wright, I live in Mulligan Meadows. My question is, the gentleman said that the houses are going to be about 2,000 to 2,500 square feet per house, and if you look at the plans and look at the calculations, that's approximately three houses per acre, and I'm, my question is, how do they intend to put 7,500 square feet worth of housing on a one acre lot safely with wells and septics?
Yeah, for everyone, these are, these are, this has sanitary sewer, so the only reason they get by with these sized lots because they have a sanitary sewer hookup.
Okay, so then my question would be, how in the heck can three houses at 7,500 square feet fit on a one acre lot without being a nuisance to the surrounding area?
Thank you. So these lots, what are these lots, 90 by?
They're 15,000 square feet, 50% larger.
90 by 167 something?
Microphone.
So
Microphone.
Oh, my mind's on. So everyone's information, 90 foot lot gives you 15 foot side yard, so you're like a 60 foot wide house, if you're talking 2,000 square foot, you're talking 60 by 40, 60 by 35 house?
So when I say that the lots are 50% larger, that's your zoning code. In the R1B, the minimum lot size is 10,000 square foot lot. Yeah, and so in the R1A, our request now, it's 15,000 square feet, 50% larger, that's how we came to that statement.
Anyone else? Microphone's open?
My name's Jerry Rogers, 2443 North 350 East. My question is, since you guys will be voting on this, this is for you guys, you know, I want to know if you guys have done your homework on this. Have you gone to the schools and talked to the schools about the increase? Are they, you know, are they going to be ready for this? How are they going to prepare for this? They're going to need, you know, they're already maxed out now. What's the fire department going to do? It's a volunteer department, it's understaffed right now, last time I talked to the guys, I was on the fire department, you know? I just want you guys to go out and do your homework before you, you know, agree to something.
Anyone? Board, members?
Hi, my name is Kaylee Stratner, and I live at 2367 North 350. My husband came up earlier. I come up with more of a, just voicing of concerns rather than questions. As he said, we chose where we live specifically because we are a young family. I grew up in New Carlisle with a big focus of knowing your neighbors and everyone knowing each other. So when it came time for us to start our family, I wanted somewhere where my children would be going to kindergarten and preschool and high school, and having the resources and the abilities to make lifelong friendships and know who they're living next to. Like Jerry said, my concern is for the schools and the quantity of children this is going to be bringing in, the average number of children per household, they say can range, you know, from two and a half, one and a half, so for adding those extra 237 households, I understand that not every household has children that are school aged, some are middle aged retirees or their children are in college. But that's just where I'm coming from, is my concern is having the teachers, having the appropriate staffing, having the fire department and those accessibilities, so those are just my concerns I think should be looked at. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone? Board's open, they haven't told. 35 minutes? Yes, you can come back.
Susan Taylor, 2191 North 350 East. We talked about wildlife. In the two years that I've been there, the wildlife has dropped considerably because new people moving in with their guns have been killing off the deer, the wild turkey, and now you're going to tear off the one place they might have to hide, poor houses.
We have some members on Zoom, don't we? Is that Glenn?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
This is Glenn, can you hear me, Tony?
Anyone else? We're still that floor open for you. We're here to listen to, well, the developer's here to listen to anything you want to bring up.
No, we can't hear you.
No, we can't hear you, Glenn.
Oh, you can't hear me, Tony?
He's got a great face right here. Okay.
He can still talk, I'll tell you what he's doing.
Turn the volume up?
Maybe.
Hello, Tony, can you hear me? Hello, Ash, can you hear me? Hello?
We're trying, Glenn.
I can hear you, I can hear you, Tony and Ashley.
She's working on it. He can hear you, so go ahead.
Richard Strider, 2367. I actually have a very specific question that ties into what he was saying. How is not doing our homework of seeing if this is even possible, not putting the cart before the horse? Because we're going to, I say we zone it residential, and they say, no, there's, there's animals there, the deed's already done, now it's on residential, someone else is just going to come back eventually and say, well, I'm going to put a house there now. How is that not putting the cart before the horse? I mean, if there's something there, wouldn't you want to see before you dump a ton of money and everybody's time and waste it, why, why are we not? I just, we have lots of buddies that build houses, and I know that is the first thing you do before you even sign a contract on the paper is, can we go out there, can a well be put there, can a septic be put there? Is it even possible to build a house? You do that before you even sign a deed or anything. Sounds like they rushed into this deal and now, eh, we're going to do our homework later. I just want to know, how is that not a thing? It is in the private community.
If I may?
Yeah.
I'm not advocating for either side, but I want to explain the process to you folks, okay? This is the first step. Then they do the engineering, all right? Then we have what's called a plat committee, and the plat committee, we have representative, help me out Mitch, we got the health department, we've got engineering, county engineer, MS4, which is drainage, okay? And the list kind of goes on and on. Do we check with fire, they check with the schools, this is an ongoing process in plat committee, before it comes back here again for preliminary approval of subdivision, okay? This, so the zone change has to come first to see if it's possible before the county people and the investors put all their money into it, okay? And I got a flow chart in here if somebody wants to see it and see who's there and what steps they go through, but they go through a lot of steps to get to the point where they can even ask for a subdivision, they're not asking for a subdivision yet, okay? So I want to emphasize that, that all these things that you're, you're saying you're concerned about are going to be addressed, now whether you agree with the result or not, that's something else, but they'll all be addressed in the plat committee over the period of, what, the average is a year to two years of development, that's usually how long it takes, okay? So the trigger doesn't just get pulled, and the county, in my, we've got a subdivision control ordinance, which has all these requirements and they're listed, and, and they have to follow all these things in the subdivision control orders, and I've got that here if somebody wants to look at that too, okay?
Yeah, you bring up a good point, and I'm glad the public gets to see this and the home viewers get to see this, because either way, if they, it doesn't matter if it's this piece or any other piece, if the subdivision zoning changes and they move to the next step, you bring up an excellent point, that these people will put in hundreds of thousands of dollars, and they might run into something, protected species, a bat, something that they could stop, and it happens, it happens more than you understand, that drainage, sewer system, maybe the port doesn't want their sanitary sewer, maybe there's not enough water in the ground, it's, and I've been in development, engineering, and surveying a long time, these people spend a lot of money and they could get shut down, not because of the zoning, just because of something they run into, and it happens, and it's kind of strange that, and on my private side, that we run into this and, and they're stuck, they, they spent the money, it's gone, they can't develop it, or they have to lose half their lots, or whatever they have run into, it's no fun, but that's the risk they take, it's a huge risk. So this is the first step, if they would consider spending sometimes hundreds of thousands of dollars to go through all the permitting, all the procedures, come back to this Plan Commission, go through the planner, go through the engineer, go through all the drainage, and if it works out, which they think, they honestly, they've done their due diligence, they think it will work out, so you know, it's not something we're saying that it's, you know, there's a high chance that it won't, because they're not going to spend the money even sit here today if they haven't done enough preliminary professional work to say, we're willing to take the risk and spend the money and come here and, and ask for 237 lots. So, but there is a lot that goes in before they ever get, that's why I brought up the start, before they even get to put one foundation in the ground, they've got to get, they've got to get an entrance to this off too, that's Indiana Department of Transportation, they've got to get the city of the port to let them hook into the sewer line across the street, they've got to bore under Highway 2. They have got to actually pay some road and put it in because we're not going to give them a building permit until they have the sewer, the water, the road, ready for people to have access for emergency purposes. So it's, it's always huge, and I've done this my whole life to understand that, and I've been on both sides of this table, sometimes they don't work out, sometimes they spend all this money and they only can do half the lots, they run into something in the ground, maybe they run into something in the soil, we've run into stuff in soil on the summit up north of town, and it's shut down five or 10 lots, they run into clay or something strange, they can't see, but they've done, now granted, they've done enough due diligence to know they want to be here, they've hired enough professionals, they think there's a good chance that they can get this done, they've looked at enough information that they want to still move forward, so yes or no, there's so much that goes into it before, after this step. But, you know, don't say, don't say that it can't be known, because more often than not, they are moving forward after this step, so that's why we're here. And if there's something, you know, if there's something, we're elected officials and appointed people, if there's something you want from them, come up and tell us. Do you want a buffer, do you want less lots, do you want bigger lots, what do you want? You know, it's your neighborhood. We have to make decisions.
Tony, can you hear me now?
Go out to your neighborhood, we look, we drive by these places.
I don't think so.
I can't hear Rich either.
Rich is still trying to move. So if there's anything you want, we still got time, come to the podium and, and tell us your thoughts.
I have another question. What is the official barrier going to be between you guys' subdivision?
Microphone, please.
What, what is the, the barrier going to be between your guys' subdivision and Mulligan Meadows', ours that are, that are there?
So The distance between the lot and the
Our backyard's in theirs.
Backyard, okay, yeah. But I let him come to, microphone for the home viewers. For everyone, that's, you know, they, they put this on cable access and it's locked. For everyone that's, you know, they, they put this on cable access and it's live.
It, it depends on, on the location throughout, but if you're talking about the subdivision.
Oh, yeah. Where the home viewers?
I'm Charlie Ray with Dunleavy Group.
Yeah, speak up because we don't have.
Oh, you don't, oh, I'm sorry.
Well, we have some microphones for home viewers, we don't have speakers.
Oh, uh, Charlie Ray with Dunleavy Group. It depends on where you are, if you're talking about the subdivision next to this, this proposed one.
West.
Um, it's about fifty some feet. And then, uh, they don't plan on removing the trees, uh, I think another sixty feet into the property. So actually, there'll be a, a lot of trees in between. We're trying to keep as many trees as possible in this particular subdivision and to keep it more of a conservation kind of thing. So that's why the lots are bigger, the houses will be a little bit bigger, but.
Meadow, is it Meadow View, right? Meadow View looks like it has?
Mulligan Meadows.
Mulligan Meadows, sorry. Don't want to say that. Mulligan Meadows looks like it has, there's no trees, there's no buffer in your back, it's just your property line, right? Okay. So you're leaving about fifty foot tree buffer in the back?
We're leaving, well, just roughly on this, it's fifty-three feet, fifty-three feet between the back of the lot line and the actual lot, the side of the subdivision. And then in addition to that, we'll have a big portion of the lot that we will not be removing the trees on and that, so it could go as high as like a hundred and thirty-seven feet, uh, for all trees, so.
So for the people here?
Seventy percent of the lots will be wooded.
Are you going to?
Right.
Put that in a deed record or an easement if the, if somebody buys it, they can't cut those trees down? I'm just asking either way.
So the, the fifty-three feet is common area.
Yeah.
So that would be restricted. The rest of that distance would be somebody's backyard. A wooded lot is much more valuable than a, a?
A cornfield.
A cornfield lot.
I understand.
And so, uh, we're gonna protect it, we're gonna sell it. Somebody could buy that lot and yes, they could clear cut it, but that doesn't seem very likely because they paid value to have that nice shady lot. Are they gonna want to put a pool back there or, uh, an outbuilding and clear a little area? That happens over time. But what, what happens more often is somebody plants a tree in the front yard, uh, and a couple more in the backyard. So it all evens out. But we think that there'll be, as, as Charlie indicated, over a hundred feet of wooded separation. Uh, fifty-three of that is common area and would be protected.
That's us, just asking, I'm sure the people in the back would like to know that somebody, if they bought the lot, could clear cut the whole thing and just leave fifty feet. And maybe it would make them happier if there was a way that they would not cut the fifty feet. And, and either way, I'm not discussing, you know, I don't, either way, but that's what they're probably looking at.
Jennifer Wright again. Um, I had a hard time hearing back there, so I wanted to have them repeat, how much of the woods are you keeping?
They're keeping fifty feet in common area. And they're saying the lots are a hundred and sixty-seven feet deep, so you got a setback for the front building line, what, twenty-five? And you got a house of forty feet, so there's sixty-five, so they're keeping anywhere between seventy-five and a hundred feet, they're not going to clear it. Not, but they just said they're not gonna put some sort of environmental easement on it to make them keep it, somebody could cut the trees down. So you could have between fifty and a hundred and twenty-five feet of green space buffer clip.
Right, and?
But it's at least.
For the amount of homes that are going on an acre lot, there's no way they're gonna be able to keep all the trees that they're saying they're gonna keep and still fit three twenty-five hundred square foot homes.
Well, they can keep, uh, look like, if you have a two thousand square foot house and sixty foot wide, it's about, uh, sixty by thirty-five, thirty-five deep, sixty wide. So you have thirty-five plus twenty-five is sixty feet and a hundred and sixty foot deep lot. So they, they'll have thirty feet between each house and they'll have about a hundred feet in the backyard.
Thirty feet between each house?
Yeah, I, I know, I, either way, but that's our code. They'd have thirty feet between house and they'd have about a hundred feet in backyard and then fifty feet of buffer. No, it's fifteen foot side yard, right?
It's per side.
Per side, so it's thirty feet between houses, right? Minimum, they could have less, but.
They have more.
Could have more.
Yeah, they could have more. It's fifteen foot side yard, right? Mike, R1A?
Yeah, and I think what Mitch is saying, it, you're, I think the confusion is to the edge of the lot line or between the actual houses.
Yeah, it's like thirty feet between houses.
That's a different measurement.
Fifteen and fifteen. That's just the code. I, I, not arguing either way, but the code is fifteen foot side yard, so each person has fifteen foot side yard, so that's thirty feet between buildings.
And you said how many feet back?
And then they have, I think, a twenty-five foot building setback from the front of the lot and they have, say, a thirty-five foot house, so that's sixty feet. And they have a hundred and sixty foot lot, so you got about a hundred feet of backyard left.
Okay.
And he's saying pools, decks.
They're not fifty pools and decks, but I'm gonna do my math so that when the next meeting comes, I can get it worked fast.
The gentleman's.
I wanted the numbers. I did.
I think the gentleman's calculation was seventy percent wooded. I think that's what he said.
I think they're getting at, they got a hundred foot in their backyard, they're gonna guarantee fifty, you could have a hundred and fifty foot buffer, you could have fifty.
But it's fifty minimum.
Well, see, I moved out there so I don't have to see the color of people siding.
Understandable, I live in the county too. Anyone else?
For Rich and Glenn, we are working on a technical fix so that we can hear you.
Come on up.
If one of you wanna try talking and we'll see if we can hear you.
I am right now, I'm texting him, he's been texting me that he wants to talk.
I can see Rich talking, but I don't hear sound.
Rich, say something.
What?
Technical difficulties.
I told him to talk to text and I would read it, but.
Go ahead, they can hear us, they just can't speak. They can hear us. My name's Tony Albertson, I live on 350 North and, uh, I got a couple questions, a couple comments, but one of the fellows back here asked about, you know, how this worked and how we get somebody that comes in and tells us what we need in our community. And I think, uh, the, our attorney, you know, kind of interpreted that as there's different procedures to go through to get this, but I think what this young guy was asking was, how do we get somebody, a Chicago investor, a Valparaiso law firm, a Chesterton builder, all this out of county to tell us what we need in our Rolling Prairie community? I think that's what he said, he's kind of went somewhere else. But one of my questions, you guys have the house sizes?
Microphone.
The house sizes?
Microphone, please.
Are there two optioned houses, three optioned, four?
Sir.
Builders gonna be from around here? Are they out of town? You have your own building group? How does that work? Yeah, do you have?
Come on, Tony, be better.
Specific builders or you sell lots and people build on them?
So it's not cookie cutter. The answer is, is that we don't have an answer for every lot. Sometimes we'll be selling packages where they'll buy a, a home from us on a lot and other times they'll simply buy a lot and find their own builder and build a custom home or, or a, a, a home from, from another builder in another builder's package. I think that those are really the better, uh, communities because you have the diversity of architecture. Um, I represent a lot of developers and they do it all different ways. A lot of times a developer will be the sole builder within that development, within that subdivision and each builder has a unique architecture. And if they build every home in the entire community, the architecture is similar, uh, up and down the street, you see that. In this scenario, you won't have that. Uh, there'll be a diversity of architecture, diversity of homestyles, diversity of, uh, building, uh, sizes and so forth. I think that's good for the community.
Do you have an architectural review committee?
We will.
Are, are there gonna be covenants or homeowners association?
Absolutely, yes, we've got plenty. Because of the density or lack thereof of the community, we've got eighty-eight acres of open space, common area in this development. Eighty-eight acres. That's fifty-three percent of the land area is common area. So we need somebody to maintain that. Mr. President, I have a question for the attorney. Uh, sir, to help the, the public, the people that are here and at home, could you give an estimate in an optimal market on how long it would take to develop those two hundred and some houses? We believe it's ten years. So I wanted that to be, be known. So if he gets all the approvals that he needs after this?
In two years.
And, and two years for that. Sewer, end up, um, the, the water, endangered species, uh, permits, certificates of occupancy, selling lots, you're looking at a decade before, i- if everything goes right, before that development is full and before there, those demands are, you know, transferred to the, uh, volunteer fire departments, the schools and, and whatnot. And that's in optimal market conditions. So I just want to make that clear that this isn't just, you know, we approve a rezone, uh, tonight and, you know, next week you got two hundred more houses because it's not, that's not how it works. There's a, there's this big thick book, this joint county zoning ordinance, big thick book, lots of rules and regulations and procedures that, um, developers need to follow when they're developing land.
Thank you. Commissioner Rosinsky wants to see if we can get him on speakerphone.
Okay, Rich.
Okay, now can you hear me? Can you hear me?
As loud as you can.
I was gonna say, I'm not gonna have it right here, Rich. So unfortunately, even if I have you here, I can hear you and the plant, the board can hear you, I'm not sure about the audience. He says it's too loud.
When this first project first came before the, uh, commissioners, um, I have a question about the guy that made the motion to shut it down. I, I didn't like the way it sounded. I didn't like, uh, three houses to a acre, which by the way, the lady that keeps saying that, that was the original plan, it's changed, it's one point eight now, one bigger lots. Um, I, the, a, a big plus is that we can tie into the sewer line in Rolling Prairie. Uh, we need, we need more flow for that sewer line, that would be good. Uh, two hundred and thirty-seven homes is a, a huge difference from what they first started off with, with three hundred and some. Um, this, the way they want to do it, I, I talked with these folks a couple times and I like the way they want to do this. To start off with thirty homes, to see how that works, that will not only give them an idea of how things work, it'll give us an idea of whether they can be trusted and we gotta watch them and make sure that everything's going the way it's supposed to. When it finally gets to that point, um, we talk about cutting down all the trees, I don't see them cutting down all the trees. And as far as the issue with the, uh, electric, they're not just gonna tie onto the end of the line and hope for the best. That will require Indiana and Michigan to redo that line to make sure we have sufficient, uh, electricity. But you'll have electricity, you'll have a sewer line, this will put a lot of folks on the building trades to work. I think it'll be a beautiful little addition to that area. But, um, as you've been stating several times, there's a whole lot of stuff to go through before you get to that point, before you ever build one house.
Okay, hang on, Rich, they're, um, they're trying to discuss the speaker thing here so people can hear you because only the board can hear you up here, unfortunately, but the audience couldn't. So I'm not sure what their anticipation is that we're gonna do here, hang on. So hold on. Because I think they really need to hear what you said.
Basically, just let her summarize, uh, Mr. Rosinsky's speech, pretty much what he said. I can do that.
In a short, sweet summary, Mr. Rosinsky, am I not right that you were opposed to the first proposal? You've heard the changes and you think that the Rolling Prairie Sewer District, uh, would benefit from this and you like the fact that they reduced it to, from three hundred plus homes down to two thirty-seven? Is that correct?
That's correct, yeah. I, I like the way they're moving. They're, they seem to be very patient and they seem to be moving in the right direction. Uh, it's like we said when we met with them, we, we have to all get along and do this the way we want it to be done. Um, and they have been working with us very well, very well. The meetings we've been together, uh, very, very well.
Thank you.
Okay.
Can the board hear me?
The floor.
Hello, Rita, can you hear me?
Oh, I can hear you now, Glenn, how are you through my phone?
I can hear you. So I, I have a question, I mean, we keep talking about this and Rich, I understand your point, but this development is within a mile to a mile and a half of three thousand to four thousand dairy cows. Those farmers put their waste on the adjoining fields, there are smells and dust and I don't think, I mean, this developer's only owned this land since December of twenty-one. He has no idea what this community is and what he is, he is doing to this community.
I lose him. I did look at the, uh, what, Sandridge?
And now it just disconnected.
So Sandridge was first planted in nineteen ninety-four and the last phase was planted in two thousand and five and there's about twenty-three lots left. So that is seventeen years from the last phase, so when they say it's gonna be ten years, it could be fifteen or twenty.
Mr. President?
Rita, did you, did you hear me?
Just for public knowledge, for the, the two board members that were just speaking, none of you got to hear what they said. Um, this workshop is being televised on Alco, so it will be available on Alco TV, online, Access Indiana. Um, so not, not only should we, you be able to hear the proceedings, uh, as they're taking place in here, but you should be able to get the audio of the two board members that were speaking because I think both of them had, uh, valuable contributions to the conversation. And I would further add that this big thick book that I was talking about earlier with all the codes and ordinances and rules and stuff that these developers need to do, that is also available online on our website for anybody to check out and peruse through for themselves.
Are you still selling the copies of that book?
No, we're not. But it is available online. It is available online.
Anyone else? Come on up. We got time.
I have another question. He says he's gonna keep all these trees. Have any of you that are in this development lived in the woods? Okay, how many trees are falling down because of floods, the rains, the close development that's ruining the roots? I lose, every time it storms, I lose a tree in my woods this year. So you can't say you're gonna leave this many trees because they're not gonna be there, especially when you're clearing out the property around them. They're, they're gonna be fallen. Plus, your interest not gonna leave, you have a, a tree that's ten feet from your house, they're gonna say, cut that tree. But you're not leaving as many trees as you're saying.
For Glenn that's over there, I'm sure he could hear us, to see if we can synop-
Can hear.
Say what he, he was concerned that there are three to four thousand cows within, how far? A mile of this, so the smells, the dust, the work. And they put manure on the fields out there, I've personally been out there, woo. Um, that's what, that's what they, our member Glenn Minnick was saying, the farmer.
Has, has a developer?
Mr. President, I could.
Developed in that kind of an area?
Talking again, we'll let him finish his comment. Go, go ahead, Glenn.
I say, has the developer developed in that intense of a farming community before? They've only owned the property since December, they don't know the community.
Anyone else? Come up to the podium. Podium's yours.
Uh, Luke Smith again, I have a question for, uh, you guys up here. So as far as our development plan, which I know is from two thousand and eight, how does this property fall into that? Does it fall into, uh, the town of Rolling? Does it fall into the requirements of the urban development? Where does that fall and shouldn't that be in consideration in rezoning this versus the protection of it being agricultural?
We're gonna leave that to our county planner. We're gonna leave that to our county planner. Mitch Bishop.
Microphone, bitch.
Give him your mic.
That's located in our, our comprehensive plan. And, uh, it's in a planned growth area. Uh, in our comprehensive plan, it's a twenty-year plan and that was developed in oh eight. Um, it gives recommendations of how I like to see growth occur in our county over a twenty-year timeframe. It gets updated every fifteen, uh, twelve to fifteen years, we go through an update. Um, in this area, it's a planned growth and there's roughly about twenty different areas, not that many, twelve, I believe in our county, and this is a planned growth area. And what that means is we went through the trouble of running infrastructure, um, from the city of La Porte to Rolling. And this is an area where we wanna see growth occur because of that. That's just one reason. Um, but I guess the decision criteria, I guess this is important too. The board bases their decision on the county land development plan, which is our comprehensive plan. And they base their decision on what's that subarea and what are the, you know, the future, um, plans for that area? And being a, a, a planned, uh, future growth area as signified in our comprehensive plan, that's one, one of the eight, eight qualifiers for their decision, um, this board. So we have the county land development plan, you have current conditions. If it's not spot zoning, which means, um, for instance, this area, I believe, they're after R one A now, um, this next door is also a subdivision, R one A. If they were gonna rezonate to industrial and there's no industrial around anywhere adjacent to it, that would be considered spot zoning, so that, they meet that qualification. Um, and in any neighborhood plans specific to the area, they have to meet the neighborhood plans. Uh, there is none for that area. Property values, desirable use, so highest and best use. You know, a lot of that deals with, uh, assessed valuation. Right now, that area isn't making, I could look in the record, but I'm, I'm for sure we're not generating much tax revenue off that. Uh, so current conditions, comprehensive plan, desirable use, property values, responsible growth, spot zoning, your neighborhood plan. Those are the, uh, eight, eight qualifiers that this board is supposed to make their decision based on.
We have a few minutes, maybe we get Glenn to, might be able to hear you, Glenn, or Rita.
Okay, can, can you hear me now? Yay. So I've been trying to get through, I mean, everybody has a lot of good concerns here, but the biggest concern is you are building in one of the most intensely farmed areas of La Porte County. There are three to four thousand dairy cows a mile away. The waste is applied in the adjoining areas to this subdivision. There are gonna be smells and dusts that this developer has never seen before. I, I just, they just bought this property, they're not a part of the community. They don't understand what goes on out there and I'd like to hear from the developer on that. I'd also like to make one comment as to Mitch's statement that it's a planned growth area and I just don't believe that's true, it's zone ag, that's the way we planned it. And the only reason that the, uh, sewage line is in proximity to this is because we sent it to Rolling Prairie to help those, that community because they had septic problems and they needed access to the system. And that's why it's there. It's not looking for development from, from La Porte, you know, along that route. It was just looking to help an area that needed, um, sewage services. So, but I'd like to hear from that developer about if he's ever developed this close to heavy industrial farming, which is what's going on there.
Thanks, Glenn.
Thank you.
We wanna give, do we wanna give Commissioner Rosinsky, can we hear you still?
Dude, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Wow, modern technology, ain't we something? As I stated earlier, when this first came before the Board of Commissioners, I had a lot of questions. Uh, when they talked about, uh, the small lots, three houses to an acre, um, we, we turned it down. Uh, the developer has come back to us, I've met with them, I don't know, like, two or three more times since then, probably. And they have really changed their, their development plans. They're talking about one point eight houses to an acre. It's something I hadn't thought of that they pointed out is a lot of people, whether you be young or old, you don't really want a great big yard to have to take care of. I know about that, trust me. Uh, the sewer line, yes, it was put in to save homes and businesses in Rolling Prairie area. I kind of railroaded that when I was on the council. But it needs more flow and this would provide a lot more flow, it would help it out. It's gonna, it's aging before its time right now. Um, and to have a, a, a lot in the county where you're hooked up to the sewer, that's a big thing. It's gonna put a lot of people in the building trades to work, building homes, not gonna build them all at once, as they stated. Not gonna cut down every tree, they're not gonna leave every tree. So, you know, we kinda get carried away here, exaggerating with things. I, I appreciate all of the work that the developer has done and met with us over the past, uh, weeks, that they are, they're trying to, to make sure that this is done right. They're trying to please the county and the residents. And Glenn, you're right, uh, but you know what, if, if I was gonna, if I was from the city, I, I live in the country, I always have, you know, I, I don't live too far from, for this development myself and I don't live too far from the Ekovich Farm or the other farms. And yeah, I smell it when they, when they spread manure on the farm, but I grew up that way. But I don't see anybody coming out here from Chicago or from any other big city and then they smell that and they still wanna live there. If they do, great, but that'll be up to them. Personally, I like my dad always used to say, when you smell manure, it smells like money.
For everyone, Commissioner Rosinsky's at home, he's quarantined from COVID, so he wishes he could be here.
I do.
Anyone else, we got a couple of minutes left, but we officially open the meeting at six o'clock, yeah?
I just wanna make another comment about the county, the plan, development plan. Uh, what he's referring to as far as the urban expansion, I understand it could fall under that category, but under towns and villages, Rolling Prairie falls in there. And we had a discussion before about his interpretation is that it's referring to the actual town. But if you actually read the objectives and you read the findings, that's not just relevant to the town of Rolling. And specifically in that section, it says, you should not allow subdivisions unless you have sewer and water. So I'm trying to figure out from you guys how I'm supposed to, it, it's up to somebody's interpretation on whether that falls under this category or this one. All I know right now is it's agricultural and it's been that way for a long time.
I guess a couple of minutes from the developer before we start the meeting. One note is, oh, you know, one note is the north part of this property is zoned R one B. So if they would, and these are investment choices and decisions and risks, if they wanted to develop the north part of this property in two or three phases, they could probably fit and jam R one B in, they would come forward and move on and hope in years that you'd redevelop, re-zone the back. You know, it, it's not just ag, it's zoned, some of this is zoned R one B right now. Any last questions or discussion from the developer, anything?
I would add, uh, Mr. President, that over the past several decades, many farmers have come through to the county and split off their land, uh, with road fundage to sell it for residential use. Uh, so much so that we have standard forms in our office that when we issue building permits for people that are building on these, uh, ag-zoned property for residential use, uh, that we, you know, hand that out to them. So if, if there is city folk that are moving out there, they can be informed of what smells and activities will be occurring on their, uh, ag-zone land, uh, for residential use. So this isn't something new, this isn't some inexperienced panel. You know, this is, this is a, a process that's been going on, uh, even before many of us in this room existed. There are procedures in place to deal with this kind of stuff, from stormwater management to certificates of occupancy to, you know, a whole litany of things.
Wanna roll in the meeting?
I just wanted to, to make one comment, we're, we're getting blasted because we're from our county and out of town. And my client is from Chicago and he develops, uh, in Michigan, he develops in the city of Chicago. Then he's not developing for himself. He's not a Chicago developer or a Chicago market. He's a developer who happens to have an address in Illinois. But the product, the people whose homes are going to be in the subdivision will be La Porte County people. That's who you should be focused on. Not who's putting lines on a piece of paper, not who's pounding nails into two-by-fours, but it's the people who are going to be living in the subdivision and it's the people frankly that are in this room outside. It's not whose address, uh, is on the petition or whose, uh, address is on the permits that they're gonna be securing as we go forward.
Thank you. Well, we're going to go into, does Alco need us to stop for a minute?